We'll call to order the Douglasville City Council Legislative Work Session for tonight, which is Thursday, February 27, 2025. Our invocation will be done by our own Emily Hardaway, Communications and Manager for the Community Relations Department. And after that, we ask that you please stand for the invocation and the Pledge Allegiance, which will be led by Councilmember Howard Estes. Please stand for the invocation.
Okay. Let's pray. Dear Lord, thank you so much for this day that you have given us. Thank you for the beautiful weather, Lord. I ask that you please be with mayor and council this evening as they hear business for the city, Lord, and I just pray that you give them wisdom and discernment on how best to lead. Thank you for their willingness to serve and please be with them as they make decisions. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and its free will of course stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Estes, for leading us in the pledge. And Ms. Emily, we appreciate the invocation. I'll go over just a few announcements and presentations. We don't have any presentations, but I will give the instructions for the meeting this evening, and then we'll get into the body of what we're here for. My name is Rochelle Robinson. I'm mayor of the city of Douglasville. I'd like to welcome you to our legislative work session. This is a work session where agenda items are presented for discussion only. Official action will be taken on the items that we discuss this evening, next Monday, at our voting meeting at 6:00 p.m. If the business here is not listed as an agenda item, there will be ample time under the items, comments from citizens and delegate section, for you to discuss your business. I'll go over a few protocol issues and then tell you how the meeting will run, and then we'll get into the body of the meeting. I ask that you please keep your comments and presentations on a professional level, dealing with the facts that are important for this governing body to make our decisions. We will not accept comments that are considered by the chair to be of a personal attack on any individual or group of individuals. If you deviate from the warning that you receive, a second deviation will require us to ask you to leave the premises or the council chambers for the evening. Only one person speaking at a time. Please do not applaud, react to speakers, speak from the audience, cheer or carry on a conversation when you're at the podium. When you're at the podium, we ask that you please direct all of your comments to myself or the council person who's the chair of that committee, and we will respond accordingly. I ask and remind you that we're only required to accept public comments during the required public hearings, and if you have any printed materials, please give that, take those printed materials to our Assistant City Clerk, Ms. Candace James. She will make copies and disseminate that information to us. If you have a cellphone or electronic device, I would ask that you would please put those in silent mode or turn those off until after the meeting so that will not be disruptive. Now, this is how the agenda items will be handled tonight. The committee chairperson will read their agenda item, then that person representing that agenda item or applicant will make his or her presentation. Myself and council members will possibly ask clarifying questions to help us determine all the information that we need so that we can make a decision next week when we vote on Monday. After that, the committee chairperson will ask for comments or statements from the audience if it's a public hearing. We'll have 20 minutes for those in favor of the item and 20 minutes for those in opposition, and each person has five minutes to speak. Now, if you would like to speak, there are cards outside. They're blue cards. They are speaker cards. We ask that you fill those cards out, bring them forward when you come to the podium, hand them to Ms. Candace, and then you can come to the podium and talk to us, and you have five minutes to talk to us about any information germane to the city of Douglasville. So when you come to the podium, give us your name and address for the record, and then you have five minutes to speak. Each person only has one opportunity. This is not a debate or question and answer format. Debate back and forth, we're just here to hear the information, deliberate, and make our decisions. I think that's it, and if there's repetitive information, if we've heard it, we don't need to, for everyone to say, keep saying the same thing. So please judge yourselves accordingly. There's a lot of information and directions. Hopefully, we're all on the same page. We will move with the agendas, and that's how the information will be presented tonight under committees. And our first committee is Economic Development Committee. It's Mayor Pro Tem, and we don't have any business, so we'll move on then to Finance Committee, and that's chaired by Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
We have several items tonight. We'll start with Item A. To adopt an ordinance to amend the city of Douglasville's fiscal year 2024-2025 general fund budget. And Ms. Campbell will handle this for us tonight.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. Heather Campbell, Accounting Manager, 6695 Church Street. I'm presenting the third quarter budget amendment for general fund for FY '25. For revenues, we have a transfer of $945,000 from the tax allocation district fund for the rock blasting and parking lot improvements at Jesse Davis Park, as well as sidewalk replacement, fire lane, and roadway infrastructure for the town green. We're also reducing some of the revenues at Jesse Davis Park due to time taken for the construction. Rental revenues will be reduced by $300,000. We are increasing building permits and insurance premium tax bases based on actuals for a total increase of $323,000. And then for expenditures, we are increasing funds in the engineering department for the increases from the TAD transfer of the $945,000. We're also reducing some parks' personnel expenditures due to delay in construction equal to the $300,000 reduction in revenues. In community development, we are increasing other professional services by $119,000 for the contract with SafeBilt. And then after netting revenues and expenditures together, $95,000 will be added to the contingency.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell.
Yes, sir.
Start off with any questions or comments on this item? Anybody? All right. Well, Ms. Callen, is this an item? Be okay to put on a consent agenda since it's just moving?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, thank you, Ms. Campbell. We'll move that over to the consent agenda for Monday. And Item B, adopt an ordinance to amend the city of Douglasville's fiscal year 2024-2025 tax allocation district fund. And Ms. Campbell will handle this also.
Yes, sir. This amendment is for the tax allocation district fund. This amendment is primarily to transfer the funds from TAD to the general fund, and these are the funds that will be used for the town green sidewalk replacement, fire lane, and roadway infrastructure, along with the rock blasting for the parking lot improvements at Jesse Davis Park.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell.
Yes, sir.
So moving the money from TAD to contingency, that's all this is?
To general fund. Yes, sir.
I mean, yeah, general fund. All right. Any questions or comments on this item? And we will ask, I'll ask if we can place this on the consent agenda for Monday also.
It looks like it's a go.
All right. Ms. Campbell?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Item C, authorize the mayor to sign the professional services agreement with Croy Engineering LLC for survey and design services for the downtown sidewalks project Phase One and Creekwood Drive sidewalks in the amount of $367,400 to be funded from SPOST 2016. And Mr. Thompson will handle this.
Marcus Thompson, 6695 Church Street, Douglasville, Georgia, 30134. All right. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
All right. So in order for us to move forward with Phase One of our sidewalk construction project, engineered drawings will be required to ensure ADA compliance, proper drainage, and connectivity while trying to avoid utility conflicts. These streets listed derives from our previous bicycle and pedestrian plan, and also will support our downtown green space just to provide basically an alternative transportation solution. So I would say three out of those streets will be able to provide alternative solutions to our, majority to our pickup locations as well. The surveys will be completed within four months of our notice to proceed, and the design will follow, which should take approximately a year. And also, I want to point out Creekwood Drive stems from our previous multimodal study as well. And then I do have Mr. Chris ride out with Croy to answer any additional technical questions you guys may have.
Mr. Thompson, you said the surveys would take till June, and then they'll proceed with construction that would take over a year, did you say?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure I had that clear. Any questions or comments? Yes, ma'am, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, our city engineer, Mr. Thompson. So you were saying out of these for Phase One, the streets in downtown, Rose Avenue, Pine Crest Drive, Selma Drive, Hayden Street, Clark Street, and Woodrow Wilson Avenue, three were going to be done out of this phase or all of those?
No, I just wanted to point out, so three of those streets, to give you a good example, Pine Crest leads to one of our pickup locations for major events like concerts, which I think one of our pickup locations is at Hunter Park. So we wanted to add Pine Crest to that list to provide like an alternative route for the public that's attending those events. And then also, Selma Drive is listed because another pickup location route is the Douglas County High School. So we wanted to make sure we included Selma and then Rose Avenue could, you know, potentially lead the public to, I think we have a pickup route at?
West Pine.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Okay. So that, and then Creekwood Drive is an Arbor Station?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay. And I know that we talked about that, you know, like you said, before the 2016 SPOST, so we've been talking about trying to get those streets together as well.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So this is good. Now, the North Side Trail that we are planning, would any of this be connectivity? I know we're trying to connect all over the city and have people walking, more pedestrians walking to be healthier.
Not at the moment, but we are considering some roads on that, on the North Side that could possibly connect to the trail system, which will basically come from, will come when we do Phase Two.
Yes, sir. And then so on, it will be like Rose Avenue, the other side of the street, because there, I think there's sidewalks on the, I don't know, my left or something, depending on where you're driving. So it's on the other side.
We'll know once we get?
Or once the plan comes back?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Thanks so much, Mr. Thompson. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So this item is just about paying for the survey?
And design.
And then we'll hear more specifics on the, on the plan later, right?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Yes, go ahead, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Thompson, so this is Phase One. When will we start looking at Phase Two?
Well, let's see. We can start looking now as design is being taken place for these.
Okay. More specifically, I was curious about other streets because I know that there had been some mention of Presley Mill and connecting that, because Campbellton Street, you know, you have the sidewalk that runs right into Chapel Hill Road, but those kids coming from Douglas County High School that are turning left on Presley Mill and their track team and all the sports teams that run down through there don't have sidewalks.
Yeah, we will definitely take Presley, you said Presley Mill into consideration.
Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. And that was all.
Thank you, Councilwoman Miller. And Councilwoman Miller, any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you, Mr. Thompson. I'd like to place this on the consent agenda also for Monday.
Looks good.
All right. Item D, authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with Evergreen Solutions LLC to provide management consulting services for the city's 2025 classification and compensation study and analysis. And Dr. Westfield will handle this for us.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Dr. Brian Westfield, HR Director, 6695 Church Street. This item is for the pay study. This pays, excuse me, the RFP went out in August of last year. We received a total of 19 proposals. The process looked at firm experience, project understanding, and key personnel qualifications as well as cost. After evaluating all of submissions, four firms were selected for interviews by the committee. The committee consisted of six personnel throughout the city in various departments. Competitive bids ranged from $25,000 to $58,000. Through the process, Evergreen Solutions was recommended for the project due to their experience, competitive pricing, and industry reputation.
And Dr. Westfield, you said that, told me earlier that they have done the last two pay studies or three, two or three?
Since I've been here, I know the last two, sir. The last one was conducted August through November of 2021, approved by mayor and council on December 20, 2021, implemented that following January.
Yeah, I feel like they've done a good job. Any question? Yes. Were you done, Dr. Westfield?
Um, yes, sir. I was done.
Okay. Councilman Estes, go ahead.
Is this a typo or did we really have somebody submit a bid of five plus million dollars?
That is not a typo, sir. They did not make the cut.
I wouldn't imagine.
It was a typo, sir. We did reach out to them, but their bid was still pretty high.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Dr. Westfield. Good to see you.
Yes, ma'am.
And so you said we approved in 2021, so we do have a rotation that we put in for ordinances to look every three years for pay and study classification for the employees. Is it three to five or what is our rotation?
Every three to four years. It's not etched in the ordinance. It's best practice.
But it's just practice?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Thank you so much.
And if I remember correctly, you said this pay study would be done by June and that would be?
Yes, sir.
Effective for the next?
Yes, sir. I can go through the timeline. So we're looking to start March 10. We're looking to end the pay study. Have it complete about May 30. Discussion analysis, June 2 through 6, excuse me, June, yeah, 2nd through the 6th, and hopefully we will be before you again on June 12 for implementation, the first pay period in July.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Dr. Westfield. I'd like to place this on the consent agenda also for Monday.
Looks good.
Madam Mayor, we are done. Finance Committee, that's all we had.
Thank you so much, Coach. We appreciate it, and thank you to our staff, Ms. Campbell, Mr. Thompson, our city engineer, and Dr. Westfield, our HR Director. So now we'll move on to the next committee. And Councilman Estes, you are the vice chair of the committee after yours, so Housing and Community Affairs Committee, Councilmember Howard Estes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business under Housing and Community Affairs, but we do have one item for the Legislative and Intergovernmental Committee.
Yes, sir.
Item number 25-089, hold a public hearing regarding the consideration of a resolution to provide for a waiver of the requirement for a city logo on the mayor's work vehicle for calendar year 2025. And Ms. Jordan will walk us through this.
Okay. Good evening.
Good evening.
Excuse me. Miranda Jordan, Staff Attorney, City of Douglasville. So this is an annual item that was first discussed last year in January. It's an annual item because our Georgia code requires that every vehicle owned or leased by a city or the state or county has to have a logo on it. The council last year considered this request to not have a logo on the mayor's city vehicle, and that vehicle can be exempt if the council enters into a resolution to decide so. So at this time, Councilman Estes, I will turn it back over to you for a public hearing if there are not any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Okay, so we will now open a public hearing, and as before?
Do you want me to make a statement first or after?
Up to you.
Okay.
Would you like to go first?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Madam Mayor.
And just, I just want to thank the council for waiving the requirement from last year and would humbly ask that you would waive it again, and the reasons being that the license has, that it's a city vehicle, so people can see that it's Douglas County government on the license plate of the car. There is a logo on there now because it has not been waived, which is fine if you all decide to keep it. That's fine. I'm not really, I'm not going to follow my sword about it. But I am concerned just with the public, the climate of politics, how it is now in the country is kind of volatile, and I feel more like a sitting duck or a target when you have the emblem on the car. I have in the past, you know, received death threats when we had marches, people would call and leave information or threats on the phone and send letters to me, ran over my mailbox at my house. So I'm just concerned of having the logo on the car because it's more identification, and I'm by myself most of the time driving. I don't have a driver. So I'm doing city business. There is, I think, a GPS on the car. Mileage is done. You all know where I'm going, so I'm not going to, you know, Paris or anything, taking a car out of the country. But I would feel more comfortable not having the logo, but if you all decide to put it, that's fine, too. So just made my statement, and we can move from there. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
So now we will open the public hearing, and if anybody would like to come forward and speak either in favor or against this item, we have 20 minutes in total with five minutes for each person. So if anyone would like to come forward? I don't see anybody. So we will close the public hearing now. And before I open up for anybody else, I understand your concern very much. I also find the state requirement a little ridiculous because they don't, I mean, you can have a logo the size of a penny and it qualifies.
Yes, sir.
And it's already identified as a government vehicle on the license plate, which to me is enough. But I would love to hear comments or questions from anyone else on council.
We've kicked this around the last 50 years.
Yes, sir.
And like you said, it's kind of nonsense, a little thing. Plus, they give you avenues to, it's not written stone because you can opt out of it as a city. So I'm fine with that.
Thank you. Councilman Estes, yes, I completely agree with you guys. I know we have talked about this a lot, and I understand the requirements and that we have to keep talking about it annually to make sure, and maybe it's for the best that we check our temperature every year and see how everyone feels about it. But given, as Madam Mayor has said, the climate of society at this point, the fact that for the most part, I don't have any tracking devices myself, you know, I don't have her on my, by my family or my Life 360, but I could pretty much tell you where she is most And given everything that's happened in the past, I'm completely comfortable with removing that from the vehicle that she is driving around to these meetings.
Thank you, Councilwoman Miller.
Thank you.
Councilman Davis.
So you're saying it's on the tag, it has the little M M or just tags that city vehicle?
It says government vehicle.
It says government.
Oh, okay.
In Douglas.
In Douglas, okay, fine.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. With no further comments, I would like to make a motion to approve Item 25-089.
We can't vote tonight.
Oh, what am I doing? I'm getting ahead of myself.
That's okay.
Well, I tell you what I will do. Can I put it on the consent agenda?
Would everybody be here?
No.
It looks like we have, do you have any more public hearing? Did you close a public hearing?
Yes.
Okay. And so it looks like thumbs up for the consent agenda.
Yeah, because we don't need another public hearing on Monday.
Okay.
All right.
All right. Thank you so much, Councilman Estes.
Then we will put this on the consent agenda for Monday, and that is all that we have for the Legislative and Intergovernmental Committee, but I will move on to Personnel and Organization Committee and say that we have no business there this evening.
Thank you so much, Councilman Estes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Oh, you're welcome. We'll move on then to Item Number 10, which is Public Improvement and Beautification Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Nicole Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business this evening for public improvement and beautification.
Thank you, ma'am. Public Relations Committee chaired by Councilmember Samuel Davis.
Sit at your time. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Councilman Davis. We do have business under Public Safety Committee, and I'll ask the vice chair, Councilmember Chris Watts, to take that committee, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
We have several items tonight under public safety. We'll start with Item A, to consider a request to have the forfeited and canceled alcohol license of Mystery Paver, your, sorry if I mispronounced that, LLC reinstated by appeal to the city council pursuant to the city of Douglasville Code of Ordinances, Section 10-20. And I believe Mr. Fowler is going to represent on this.
I am. Joe Fowler, Post Office, Box 49, Douglasville, and I'm here tonight with Mr. Hiren Mystery. We were here on October the 2nd after hearings in September and October of 2023. We thank you for allowing us to come back tonight. You should each have our letter dated February 20th, just a few days ago, in which we refer to a letter dated February 6th in which Mr. Mystery was informed that the alcohol license approved 12, 14 or so months earlier was revoked. He did receive his license on October the 25th. That's 23 days after the earlier approval, and tonight we are respectfully requesting reconsideration of that revocation, and we believe a bit of history that has occurred since the approval on October the 2nd and the actual issuance on October the 25th of 2023. We believe that history will provide support for the reinstatement. What I provided to you was 25 or more pages that go through a host of emails between him and the state with respect to the issuance of the state license. What you have is Exhibit B before you, and I'm just going to flip through them hurriedly, was the actual license. But may I point out one thing? The application as originally approved refers to the address as 5383 Fairman Road, but suite There's a photo in the back of your records that were provided with the package that you have tonight. It shows that the property at 5383 Fairman Road is vacant. However, ours is the adjoining suite. There's suite three suites in that office, and if you go back and look at the original file, you'll see that the posting of the notice is in the middle suite. This is the picture that was in your package, and this is the farthest to the right suite that's got the number 5383. I'm sure what happened was when the city official went out to take the picture, he did not notice on the original application that it's actually 5385. That's the adjoining suite. There is inventory in 5385, and more on that in just a moment. After approval by the city, he contacted the state and received from a gentleman with whom I've spoken at the state, Mr. Kevin Key, the official who was responsible for the permitting in this area. And on November the 30th, he contacted, that is, Mr. Mystery contacted the state to give him an outline of everything that was required, and you'll see that as Exhibit C. You'll also see farther down that he contacted, he had actually contacted them earlier the day that he got his license, October the 25th, 2023, and he got the documents back from the state by email, that is, from Mr. Kevin Key, that said, these are the things you need to do. So it took about 30 days to get that response. Then Exhibit D, there's an email from Mr. Mystery to the state that's dated December the 5th, five days after the state's email, and in that, he said that he had submitted all the information for the permit on the state's portal on December the 5th at 3:43 p.m. On December the 6th, the next day, the state contacted Mr. Mystery to ask for documents, and he replied on December the 18th with all seven documents that were required. That's Exhibit F. On January the 4th, Mr. Mystery wrote the state to inquire about the status of his license that had been in process presumably for about 30 days. That's our Exhibit G. On February the 19th, there must have been something going on internally in their office because on February the 19th, the state asked for fingerprints which had been previously supplied. 19th, the state asked for fingerprints, which had been previously supplied. And on February the 21st, Mr. Mystery sent back the fingerprints. You can see that as Exhibits H and I in the package before you. Now, perhaps later, you'll get a chance to look at some of these in more detail. But if I might briefly read from Exhibit J, it's an email dated April the 29th, so now we're several months into the year. And he wrote to Mr. Key, the officer with whom he'd been coordinated, and stated, hi, this is Hiren Mystery. Did you receive the local license from the Douglasville City? He had sent it back in November. Because Douglasville City issued local license and sent it to you months ago, and I complete all steps to issue my state license, so please issue my state license so I can open a liquor store. Thanks. Down a bit below, there's an email that goes back to February the 19th, where there's the question about the fingerprinting. Now, I will note that after the inquiry on, that you see on Exhibit J, April the 29th, on May the 24th, Exhibit Say, Exhibit K, he inquired again, noting that the local license had been issued, and he was waiting to get the state permit. On May the 28th, the state asked for a revision on the bond and financial affidavit that had been submitted back on December the 18th. So right now, we're five months in. That's Exhibit L. Mr. Mystery responded on June the 5th, a week later, to respond to the request for information. And then the bond that had been revised was provided on June the 18th. And you'll note, if you happen to look at that later as Exhibit O, it's for Suite B, 5385. About a month later, on July the 10th, the state asked for bank statements, Exhibit 4, and he responded that he was out of town. 16th, that's Exhibit Q. Exhibits R and S are state questions on July the 26th, and it's interesting question, quote, where did Mr. Mystery get the money to invest in the inventory? He answered two days later. And on July the 30th, the state asked for an affidavit from Mr. Mystery about the source of his funds to buy the inventory, Exhibits T and U. On September the 9th, we're now in the fall, Exhibit V, Mr. Mystery asked again about his license, and that finally was issued on September the 11th. You'll see that as Exhibit W. The license was issued as on October the 9th of 2024. After that, and now I'm bringing this to a close, the city asked about the revenue from the store when Mr. Mystery paid his 2024 alcohol license. They asked, what is your timeline to open the store? His response at that point was, I'm working with the landlord. Now, here is the current status. He had already signed a five-year lease for Suite B of 5383 Highway 92. He's paying and has been paying $2,000 a month. He now has inventory of approximately $10,000 onsite, and you can see the photos of that as pages 52 through 54 of what you have before you. And then finally, he has paid to the city the prorated license on October the 24, 21st, 2023 of $2,871.62. He paid for the license for 2024 of $5,575, and he has paid for the license for 2025 of $5,575. He paid that back on November the 14th of 2024. I know what the ordinance says. I've talked to the city attorney about it. We are here to respectfully request that you grant the reconsideration. He's a businessman in the community. I don't know what happened between him and the state, but I don't think he has acted in bad faith in any portion of this. So over the weekend, we would respectfully request you to reconsider the revocation of his license. We'd be willing to meet any and everybody at the store if you would like. Thank you for your consideration. I'd be more than glad to respond to questions, and Mr. Mystery may as well.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Fowler. We're going to start down with Mr. Councilman Essis. Do you have any questions or comments? I do. Thank you, Mr. Fowler, for the clarification, because this was very confusing. Is the store ready to open now?
I believe it is. Yes, sir. Yes, ready to open.
So if the license revocation was changed and the license was issued, they could open right away?
I believe that's correct. I've seen the photographs. I have not been there, but I've seen the photographs. I've seen the cash register.
Okay. So it really has just been, I mean, dealing with the state up until November, if I'm remembering correctly?
Yes, sir.
And getting that straightened out, which does sound like it was a nightmare. And since then, applying for renewal on the license, which I understand why the flag went up with the staff.
From the staff perspective, they should be saying revenue.
Showing zero revenue.
Yes, sir.
And the fact that we had originally approved this back in 2023, that seems like an awfully long time between the initial issuance and to still have a zero revenue. So, but if they are ready to open immediately, that's important information to know.
I'll follow up on that and provide an email to you and other members of the council about that.
Okay. I'd appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilman Essis. Councilman Davis, do you have anything?
I just, I want to thank Mr. Fowler for presenting this and the way you laid it out. And I understand now, and I really appreciate that.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
And like you said, he's ready to open. And, okay. Thanks.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Councilman Davis. Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much, Mr. Vice Chair. Good evening, Mr. Fowler. It's good to see you. Thank you for giving us a plethora of information. It really does help. But I do have a question. Councilman Essis already alluded or just basically asked if the business was ready for, to operate currently. I know he can't because he just has been revoked. The licenses have been revoked. But if he received his information from the state on October 9th, that would have given October, November, December, three months to create revenue. So when he applied for the license on December 31st, it could have shown some activity.
Yes, sir.
Because we don't want, as the code says, or the ordinance says, 90 days, that people, you know, you get the license and open. And I understand, based on the information that you've given us, it just is, really, it's just odd that it's taken this long for the concerns. And we haven't seen this in the city before. Typically, when people come and get the license, they're prepared so, to operate their business. So I just don't understand what, if he was ready October 9th, why weren't there any sales to present from October through December so that at least we could have seen that, you know, he's not using the business as a warehouse to provide some type of revenue?
I think what was happening was this. And I remember, all the way back from the original grant of the license, there was a dispute about access.
Yes, sir.
He did not spend a lot of money inside the building to get it ready for operating because he didn't know if he were going to get a state license. It should have been perfunctory.
Right.
Once you get the fingerprints and demonstrate source of revenue and so forth, that should have been it. I believe what happened was that he was waiting to know for sure before he invested in the changes that are now there inside the store. That's the only explanation. It's a very legitimate question.
Mm-hmm.
I believe if perhaps he had seen me in October, though I've been into a liquor store only once in my life, maybe I would have stood outside and looked in, but either way.
Yes, sir.
It should have been done on a more expedited basis. I know precisely why Karen wrote her letter, and I've spoken with the city attorney about it.
Yes, sir.
He certainly learned his lesson about that, I can assure you.
Okay. And then the other couple of things I wanted to say was, I'm just thinking about it. I don't know. I'm concerned if the 90 days, if we grant the license to be reinstated, if he truly would be prepared, you know, to start. And in 90 days, will he come back again? And if this is, you know, just a place for him to house, like a warehouse to have the alcohol and not a legitimate business?
That's something that we've.
You've taken a change.
It's entitled to an answer, and I'll have to check on that between now and Monday.
Yes, sir. All right. Thank you.
Good question.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Jerome.
Yes, ma'am, Madam Mayor. I was wondering if maybe your client could step forward and name and address for the record?
My name is Hiren Mystery, 5383 Highway 92, Suite 5385, Douglasville, 30135.
Just out of curiosity, when you got your approval for your local license in October of 2023, were you aware at that time that you had 90 days from that date?
No, I don't know about that. I don't know about that.
You what now?
I don't know.
He didn't know about it.
Okay. Because I guess the way I look at it is operating a liquor store is, you know, I mean, there's a lot of rules and regulations that go with that. And so the way I'm looking at it is, I don't know where the breakdown in communication was that delayed all this, but I see, I see an approval of your local license. I had to refresh my memory. It's been a while since this came before us. And I, all that time then, all that stuff that happens in between, and nothing's taken place at that, at that store, no fixing it up, getting it ready. So I just have, you know, I have some questions about what the holdup was, what the problem was, other than what you were dealing with as far as the state was concerned. Apparently, they were asking for some things, but it just seemed like in the meantime, you know.
Nothing should have precluded you from getting the store prepared.
Yeah.
To open.
Yep.
Yeah.
Anything else you'd like to say or shed light on this for us?
Also, just.
No? Okay. Any other questions or comments? Yes, Madam Mayor?
I did. There was one other thing I remembered, Attorney Fowler. What is the relevance of the suites being three or five? What does that have to do with anything?
Nothing from our perspective, but if you go look at the one to the far right, it appears to be empty.
Okay.
Which would suggest that he hasn't done anything up to this point. It's the suite next to it. It's where you can see the inventory if you drive by tonight.
Yes, sir.
That's why I mentioned that about the photographs.
But it did not prohibit anything from the state with having the address. You were just making reference to us that there is inventory in his actual building.
Yes, ma'am. Someone by the staff went by, took a picture.
Yes.
I just saw it on your agenda.
Uh-huh.
Noticed that it was not the right location. If you go 30 feet back west, you'll see that there is inventory that can be photographed.
Yes, and we do see those, the inventory photos in our packet.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mox.
Yes. Another question is, have all the required inspections been done? And is everything up to date? And what about renovations? Are there further renovations that need to take place? And I guess the bottom line is, if you were to get your liquor license reinstated, how long would it be before revenue started coming in? So the bigger question is, are there more renovations that need to take place at this site? And are there other inspections that will slow this process down that need to take place?
No, right now, we did everything, so no more renovation. So no more renovation right now. We did everything now.
If you were to get your license tomorrow, would you be ready to go tomorrow?
Yes.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. All right. So there's no public hearing on this particular matter, but we'll take this up again on Monday. I guess there may be some other questions between now and then, so.
I'll follow up with an email to the entire council.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Fowler. All right, Madam Mayor. Okay, we're moving right along. Item B is authorize the City of Douglasville Finance Department to add Neha Behan Patel as an owner of my Tealik LTD CO DBA Corner Package Store pursuant to the requirements of Section 10-21C of the City of Douglasville Code of Ordinances. And Ms. Callahan, you're supposed, yes, go ahead.
Yes, sir. Karen Callan, Assistant City Manager. This item is just to add a partnership to a business. There's no public hearing required, and it's 5990 Fairburn Road.
Okay. And so they're going to be co-owners? Was it like a 50-50 split? Or does that matter?
I don't think it matters. And.
Okay. All right. Her name, the wife's name is being added.
Yes, sir.
As a co-owner.
Yes, sir.
That's all this is?
That's all this is. Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
The chief has signed off on the background check.
I'm sorry?
The chief has signed off on a background check, which is added as an agenda item to your, as an attachment to your agenda item. The chief still, we still run this through the background process.
So that has been done, or is in the process of being done?
It has been done.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
That was going to be my question.
Okay. All right.
And if we have had any concerns, the deputy chief, if we have any concerns at this location, it's 5990 Fairburn Road.
No, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, yes, come forward, and if you would, give us your name and address for the record.
It's Neha Behan Patel. Address is 6051 Cooper Street, Douglasville, Georgia.
Yes. Would you like to make a statement? Or go ahead and pull that, that mic down just a little bit. Go ahead.
Okay. So my name is adding as a 50% partnership at the 5990 Fairburn Road, doing the business as the corner package store, and as a partner since the January 1st, 2025.
So you've been involved.
My, yesterday, I get the approval from the state. I'm just waiting from the city now.
So you've already been involved in the business up till now?
Mm-hmm.
And you're just being added as a partner?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for that. Any other questions or comments from council? This is one of those.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Is this one of those items I had to hold over till Monday, or is it okay to put it on a consent agenda?
I think we can put it in a consent. She's not the operating manager every day that would have to go through that check, but as an owner, if her background check is cleared already, the police department, it should be fine.
Sounds good. All right. So we'll place that on a consent agenda for Monday. Item C, Consider a Request for the Alcoholic Beverage Licenses for the Retail Package Sale of Wine and Malt Beverage at the Following Establishment. Proposed licensee S Square Douglasville LLC, DBA Light It Up, Location 6093 Fairburn Road. Proposed agent, Nargis Sethany. If I've mispronounced it, I apologize. The required fees have been paid to the Finance Department. And, Madam, go ahead and pronounce your name for me again, and give us your address also.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Shermeen Jasani, actually. I'm here helping out Nargis Sethany.
Okay.
Yeah. And this is for 6093 Fairburn Road.
Okay. Would you, do you have anything you'd like to say about?
Business.
This request, or anything you'd like to?
Yeah. I mean, we were just asked, when we were submitting our application, why we wouldn't be okay having alcohol here, and, you know, that we wouldn't serve to minors. And just wanted to point out that minors aren't really allowed to come inside. We've got a clear signage outside saying over 21 only, and of course, IDs are always checked. That's all.
And this, this is. And this, this establishment used to be called S Squared, and now it's?
So, uh, S Squared is the corporate name, and Light It Up is the DBA.
I got you. And and your, the request for the, uh, beverage license is for wine and malt beverages, not for anything else?
Yes, sir. No, that's all.
And it's also, is my understanding, it's it's a vape and cigar store also, or?
That is correct, but there is also sales of, uh, cell phone accessories, detergents, um, diapers, anything that really allows for the sales to go up, to be honest.
Okay, so you.
It's a mixed use. Um, we sell almost everything.
Yes, okay. Um, any questions or comments from council? Yes, Madam Mayor?
So this is, um, like a package. This is not sit-down. Is it sit-down?
No, ma'am.
Oh, okay, cuz I was gonna say something about the food-to-beverage ratio to alcohol ratio, so you don't have that concern. Have we had any concerns, Deputy Chief, in this facility?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Sell the hat, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chair.
How long have you all been, uh, established in that location, or is this brand new?
Since June of 2024.
2024. And this is the first time you're you're asking for the beverage?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions or comments?
Yes. Go ahead.
I was curious. I'm sorry. I I would take a sip right as I was getting ready to speak. Leave it to me. Um, as far as, I know that you said it's not actually, I guess technically, a liquor store, because it seems to be kind of like an all-purpose convenience store. Although you have to be 21 to get in, so, um, like, my kid can't run up there and get detergent for us. I guess I'm a little confused about the purpose of it. And also, you are like right across the street from another liquor store, and a stone throw from yet another liquor store. So I was curious what the classification is, and as far as like the, um, distance requirements as well, if if that plays into with this one? So, so, so it doesn't, okay, so it's kind of like a, like a 7-Eleven?
Like a Dollar Tree.
Of any other gas station, uh, grocery store?
Okay.
That sells beer and wine?
I'm on page now. Okay, thank you. Sorry about that.
I know.
So they're not classified as a liquor store?
Uh, just to help clarify, yes, we do sell detergent and, you know, uh, cell phone accessories, but originally it did start off as a vape and smoke shop, so just even if you wanted to buy detergent and you're under 21, sorry, you can't.
So because, I guess if you're not 21, then you can't even enter?
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Okay.
Precisely.
Okay.
Um, hello, thank you for coming down this evening. Uh, my question is, I, uh, you mentioned that you've been in business since June of 2024, so a few months shy of a year. Um, but this is something new that you're wanting to add as an additional business component. Um, you know, with respect to your business model, is is there a, a, a need you're trying to fill beyond just, uh, increasing your, you know, your revenue? Or is this gonna be, you know, if for any reason this doesn't move forward with this, inhibit your ability to operate in the city of Douglasville and, you know, you know, maintain your business model as is? Does that make sense what I'm asking?
Sure. Um, very honestly, it's to increase the bottom line. Um, this is the first time we've seen, um, you know, revenues start to drop January and February. Um, really didn't anticipate the retail slump that we're coming across, so quite honestly, that's all it's for.
Okay, so just to continue making that that payroll and the monthly bills to.
Precisely.
Understand. I thank you. Thank you.
I guess my last comment or question would be, uh, you know, if you go into a convenience store where cigarettes are sold and, uh, beer and wine, nobody's asking for ID until they come up to try to purchase something that you have to be 21 to get, but you have to be 21 just to walk through the door. So how do you verify? I've seen some high school students around here that's got a heavier beard than I do, so how do you, how do you verify folks that are coming through your door?
So I would like to give props to our staff because they are fantastic. Um, they actually have been pretty good at picking up on those kids that just want to come in and buy a vape, and we've been pretty strict about that. So as soon as they're walking in through the door, number one, if you have a hat on, if you have a mask on, sorry, you're moving it. Um, and simply, they've, uh, you know, asked people to leave after they're like, hey, are you 21? Respectfully asking. Um, and, you know, do you have your ID on you? Um, no, I left it in the car. If you don't mind, would you run out and get that for us? It's just, you know, being respectful and, you know, taking care of the customer , but at the same time knowing that they're they're young, you know, and we know this. Yeah, sure.
Any other que, yes, Madam Mayor?
I do. This, the last thing. Thank you so much for coming in and and presenting to us. And of course, if you were to be granted this, this is, the license is a privilege and not a right. Um, so the other, only thing I would say is that, um, I'm not sure if you, for beer and wine, do you have someone that's already, um, trained in checking license or have had experience? I mean, because you haven't had this component to your business yet. And so I know they're checking for vaping and 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 all of that, but is there someone that has already had, um, you know, certified or trained? You typically, there's, um, companies that come in, they have, um, some mechanism that it catches it on the register, they look at their license, or if you can just talk to us about that, how you would be able to determine, not just based on what they're saying, but to actually have that mechanism to check their license.
Yeah, and we we have been actually concerned about this, so, um, we've considered having one of those mechanisms that, um, actually check whether the ID is real or not to speak to that. Cuz they do come in and they're like, oh, yeah, this is mine, and you can clearly tell that they're not real IDs. So we have, and then all you have to do is scan, um, the the UV code on there, and it is, and, you know, if it is granted, we would love to put that into place.
Okay. And would you be the operating manager every day? Is there someone else that like that would go in? Two others now?
Oh, no. So I'm not the operating manager, um, but there is the manager that is there all the time.
Okay.
Most of the time, let me not say all the time. Yeah.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from council? All right, thank you. We will take this up again on Monday.
Thank you.
Thank you. One last item, Madam Mayor. We have, uh, item D, authorize the mayor to sign the FFY 2026 Western Region Traffic Enforcement Network Grant Project Application for the Police Department. And Deputy Chief Davidson's gonna handle this.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mayor and Council. JR Davidson, 283 Fairburn Road. This item is for a grant that is given by the Governor's Office of Highway Safety. Come on up here, Joe. Officer Joe Stager has been acting as the administrator or coordinator for the Western Region. This will be his fifth year. Essentially, this grant pays for expenses, uh, that he incurs, um, when he's coordinating the training for the Western Region, which is eight counties, as well as, uh, road safety checks. So this grant reimburses for those expenses.
Very good.
Well, uh, that sounds good. Maybe step forward. It's been, this is a kind of a yearly thing, isn't it?
Yes, yes, sir.
Go ahead and step forward and just briefly tell us, uh, everything that you're doing here.
Joe Stager, 2083 Fairburn Road, Douglasville Police Department. Um, like Deputy Chief said, this will be my fifth year as the coordinator, covering eight counties, 33 different police agencies, and multiple GSP, uh, trooper posts. What the, what the grant covers is, operating expenses, we're required to conduct 10 different meetings throughout those eight counties throughout the year, six different multi-jurisdictional, uh, traffic safety ventures, to include, um, Operation Southern Slowdown, which focuses on all of the interstates, 75, 285, 8520, which is in our local area. Um, and then it also encompasses the reimbursement for travel for myself and my assistant coordinator to go to different conferences encompassing traffic safety.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, any, anyone have a question or a comment for, yes, Madam Mayor?
I was gonna let, Councilmember Hudson, thank you so much for, um, taking the wheel, and this is a big job. You're doing a lot of heavy lifting, so we appreciate you, um, doing this for us and helping us to be safe, um, citizens on the highway, and we just want you to be safe as well. I know, um, uh, traffic stops really are concerning. I don't know, a couple of months ago, I think maybe in Paulding or something, but, um, thank you so much, and we appreciate everything that you're doing for us, and excited, um, that you're here, and this eight counties come together, and hopefully in the Western Region, we're safer, people can slow down and be safe while they're on the highway. So thanks so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Any other questions or comments?
Councilmember Hudson.
Uh, Councilwoman Hudson.
Thank you, sir. Um, Deputy Chief, I, just in case I may have missed you mentioning it already, uh, there is not a match to this grant. Is that correct?
No, there's no cost to the city. It's, uh, completely reimbursed by the state, the Governor's Office.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay. Um, and the way I read the grant, it's a reimbursement, so it's out of pocket and then reimbursed?
Correct. We we pay for it, and then the state gets the paperwork. We send it in, and they reimburse us for every dollar.
Okay, good. Officer, Officer Stager, I appreciate your work on this. Five years in a row. How, did you just, you just keep drawing the short straw, or how does that work?
No, I was, uh, elected four years ago to the position, uh, through all the agencies in the region.
Wow.
You're doing a good job.
That I enjoy, so I'm gonna continue doing it.
Well, I'm, I know you're doing a good job, or they wouldn't keep asking you headed up, so that's great. And you represent Douglasville well. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right, I'm gonna place this on the consent agenda. Thank you.
Thank you.
For all y'all do. Stay safe, please. Madam Mayor, that's all I had tonight under public safety.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. You did a great job. Thank you for our staff and, um, the citizens coming in as well. You have the next committee, which is Recreation, Culture, and Tourism Committee.
Surprisingly enough, we have nothing tonight under Recreation, Culture, and Tourism.
Great, thank you. Uh, Technology Committee, that's chaired by Councilmember Elena Hudson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business under the Technology Committee this evening.
Thank you so much. Um, I'll ask if you would please take attention on this committee as well, Transportation Committee, Councilmember Hudson.
Yes, ma'am. I'd be happy to. Um, there is no business under the Transportation Committee this evening.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
So we'll move on to the next committee, which is, um, we have a lot of agenda items. We'll ask you to pack your patients. And us Planning and Development Committee chaired by Councilmember Nicole Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Welcome.
Yes, ma'am. We've got a couple of items this evening, so buckle up, friends. And our first item is item 24 dash 094.
Mm-hmm.
Says to consider a request for plat approval to combine parcel ID 0059, 0060, 0061, 0062, 0063, 0064 into a single 17.078 acre lot at 127, or 12671 Veterans Memorial Highway, located at Landlot 192, District 2, Section 5. Application submitted by PEC Plus in care of Chris Sanford, and Mr. James Gordon is going to go over this item with us.
Good morning. Good afternoon, I mean, good evening.
Good evening. I know we've been here long, huh? You gone through the whole day, Mr. Gordon.
Yeah. Mayor and Council, I'm James Gordon, 6695 Church Street. And this item is at the corner of Veterans Memorial and Whitley, and this is the clump of trees that has, um, future development assigned to it. This item combines the six individual lots, which are under one ownership into one large tract of land.
Okay.
To allow it for future development. And I'll take any questions you may have for this.
Thank you for that, Mr. Gordon. Now, um, i- is this the same piece of land that we've been discussing for several years, and I feel like already had, okay, so that's the one that we've already discussed? Like, I feel like as soon as I came on council, I'm talking like summer 2019, this is what we were discussing. Is that right? Okay. Just wanted to make sure that I was keeping it straight. Um, Count, Coach, did you have a question?
Yeah, Mr. Gordon, what's this, uh, property zone right now?
Um, I'm not aware of the zoning.
Mr. Gray.
I mean, you you said that they wanted to combine these for future development, so I just was curious as to what?
It should be residential right there, because it's residential across the street, and all the way up Whitley right there is residential, but we can verify that if.
Like R2.
Madam Chair, if I can clarify that, you all visited a rezoning application, including these parcels, um, and and that was previously rezoned, it's been a little over a year ago. So for the development process, they have to combine into one parcel?
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Um, Madam Mayor, did you have any questions regarding this item?
No, we'll, we'll see.
Well, I I know the meeting was getting long. I just wanted to make sure that everyone was like on the same page. Um, this, I know it's not a public hearing. Is the applicant here, and did they have anything that they would like to share regarding this, or is this just kind of, I think, maybe I'm just getting ahead of myself, cuz this is.
No, the applicant is not here with this.
Okay. Well, I mean, like, I feel like this is pretty straightforward, and it's kind of exactly what we've done many times. Are you guys okay with placing this on the consent agenda? Yep. I see some nods. Okay. All right, thank you then. I'm good with that. All right, um, moving along then. Item 25 dash 095 says to consider a request for final replat approval to establish the as-built locations of the townhome buildings for lots 77 through 81 of Laurelwood Phase 2 for 12.018 acres at 5059 Reservoir Drive and Landlot 23 and 24, District 1, Section 5, application by FR Arbor Place LLC. Uh, Mr. James Gordon is here to go over this item with us as well.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a, another building that's in Laurelwood Phase 2 that we've, um, done previously. These are lots 77 through 81. There is approximately, uh, four more buildings in this phase that will be, um, in the area of this one. Then there's another six back around the, um, clubhouse, around the swimming pool that need to be constructed. So this is still underway with this phase. And this is just one particular building that has, that has been finished, so now they're ready to go to closing.
Okay, wonderful. And I know that we've, we've seen this several times, and I guess we'll see a few more, but, um, everything is still going smoothly. We haven't had any issues over there?
No, no. All the inspections have been going well.
Okay, perfect. Council, did you guys have any questions regarding this item? Nope. You guys okay with placing this on the consent agenda? All right, I appreciate that. Thank you very much, Mr. Gordon.
Thank you.
Next item is item 25 dash 101. Says to refer back to the Planning Commission to hold a public hearing to reconsider a request for a change in zoning from general commercial, uh, public, semi-public, and planned unit development to planned unit development for 82.20 acres located at the intersection of Rose Avenue and Bill Arp Road and Landlot 161, District 2, Section 5, parcel IDs 0017, 0043, and Landlot 162, District 2, Section 5, parcel ID 0029, application by DRB Group. And Mr. Dana Gray is on here to go over this item with us.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Dana Gray, 6695 Church Street. Uh, just to add, um, what you just let, uh, read, their proposal, uh, is for 125 single-family detached lots and 357 townhomes totaling 482 units. However, the applicant has requested the application go back to the Planning Commission for review, um, which this selection or request comes from Section 12.08.4.I3.
Is there any reason that it should not go back to the Planning Commission?
No.
Would it cause any? Would it cause any issues or stress on staff to, for it to go back to the Planning Commission?
No.
Okay. Council, do you guys have questions, concerns regarding this?
I do.
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Why is it going back?
So, we have a traffic study being done by AECom, and they would like to wait for the results of that traffic study.
Okay. The school system, I know they have made a recommendation, would they be privy to knowing the information, knowing that it's going back to the Planning Commission?
Yes, we can notify everyone.
Contact the school. Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Gray. Thank you.
Thank you. And is the applicant here and did they have anything that they would like to add to this?
They are here.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. My name is Jessica Hill. My business address is 600 Peachtree Street, and I represent DRB Group, the applicant. I'm also joined by Carrie Smith, who is with DRB Group tonight as well. And we would just ask that you refer the application back to Planning Commission. When we met with the Planning Commission in September, we learned about this pending AECom traffic study, and traffic seemed to be a big concern about this project. We had asked to be deferred for the traffic study, and due to timing and considerations in the code, we're told that we couldn't wait out the AECom study. And as you're familiar, council has similar waiting periods and timeframes in which things have to happen. But I understand from Mr. Gray that the traffic study is expected hopefully in a couple of weeks, a month or so, and I'm sure it'll be presented to you. But we would just like to have the opportunity to have that information before Planning Commission, before we come back to you, so we can have a better conversation about this. So, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. That's understandable. Hearing that, Council, did you have any additional questions?
I did have a, just a point of clarity. It still would go back with the 482 units? Or you're gonna change the application? Or the only thing that you're going to submit new would be the traffic study?
Correct. We'll have the benefit of the AECom traffic study, and we'd be happy to have conversations with the city about. I know there's some area that could be used for public purposes. There's, we're happy to have any conversations you want to have about the plan. As, I think as some of you are aware, we started out with just under 800 units, including an apartment component. We have since removed the apartments and reduced the density. So, you know, again, we're really looking for a way to make the project work for everybody and all the different organizations. So, again, happy to have any feedback or meet with anybody.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you for that. I know, I know I'm gonna have a lot of questions, but for myself, I'd just rather wait until we have all the facts and we can just open that up together and go through it and figure out what that will look like at that time. Council, is there any reason that we should not place this on the consent agenda? No?
To the back.
To the back. Perfect. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item. Item 24-054 says to hold a public hearing and consider a request for change in zoning from planned unit development with a base zoning of general commercial to general commercial for 9.61 acres located at 3311 Summerlin Parkway and Land Lot 760, District 18, Section 2, parcel ID 0007, application by John W. Jordan, Hyatt Walker Jordan, PC. And Mr. Dana Gray is going to go over this item with us also.
Okay. Again, this is a rezoning from PUD with a base zoning of general commercial to just general commercial with no restrictions. So, the restrictions that were placed on this ordinance were only to allow this site to be used for commercial uses, being limited to daycare and office use only. So, the reason for the rezoning is to lift this restriction so that it can be solely general commercial. The applicant is proposing a C-store with a gas station, a car wash, and two commercial retail buildings. And again, the site is located at the corner of Summerlin Parkway and Lee Road. And they stated that the property has not seen a turnaround for development in quite some time, so the applicant is proposing the rezoning in order to develop the property with, under less restrictions. And that concludes.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. Is the applicant here? And would you like to come on down and give us your name and address for the record?
Mayor and Council, thank you for having us here. Greg Hecht with Hecht Walker Jordan, 205 Corporate Center Drive. Appreciate the opportunity to present this to you. And I believe one council member has a birthday. Happy birthday as well. So, been a while since I've been back to Douglasville and is glad to be here again. This particular project is exactly what the, what Mr. Gray, what the Planning Director said, and that is that it had a 20-year timeframe with no development whatsoever. It had a PUD, which this is the commercial part of the PUD, that hasn't developed for 20 years because it was restricted just to basically a daycare center and office. And as a result, nothing has happened on it. Our client would like to utilize it for the multi-use general commercial retail shopping plaza, which would include a primary shopping plaza building with several suites for lease, a smaller commercial retail building fronting Lee Road for a drive-through coffee shop, restaurant, or other retail option, a convenience store with gasoline sales, and a car wash. And I believe that we have slides that are placed in. Ah, wonderful. Now, I've just gotta make sure that I can use this the right way. Okay, so, as you can, my understanding is you have a screen on the other side of this where you can see this as well. So, as you can see, this is the Kensington Shopping Center site. Subject property was last rezoned in 2004. It was a PUD. And as you can see in the particular site, we're the red dot toward the southwest portion, right there off of the, off of the road. And as you can know, we have worked with the, well with Dana Gray, the planner on this particularly, and feel like this will be a great project. We gained unanimous support from the Planning Commission on this. I believe the stat report was quite favorable as well. I believe you can also see on the other side that DeKalb County on the other side is lining this with commercial. And I believe that you can see kind of from the aerials over here exactly what the exact site looks like. It is vacant right now in need of development that'll add to the tax base and the job base of the city. You can see in particular kind of what's surrounding it. I believe you will notice that in the slides, the subject property previously is vacant. You'll see that there is the old PUD plan in this particular slide, which designates on the right-hand side the commercial tract that it's supposed to be in the original PUD planning. But there is nothing that has gone commercial there, which is why this project comes through. You will also see, of course, the, I believe is the future land use portion as well. My understanding, this has already been varied administratively, so that this is now consistent. You would have, let me get to the site plan, if I can, on here. These are in a little bit different order than we had seen. There's the site plan. So, as you can see off the site plan, as you come in Lee Road, there's a main entrance there in the middle that you come down to. You'll see that on the far left, you've got the, or on the south side, you've got the convenience stores and the gas pumps. The middle would be kind of the rest, I wish, I think there's a, no. In the middle, you can see where hopefully a coffee, coffee store like a Starbucks or otherwise would be hopefully in the middle there. And on the north, as you can see, would be a restaurant type as well as what we're hoping to. You can see on the far end, you have about 72,000 square feet, hoping for a Sprouts Farmers Market type store, as well as several other opportunities to lease up within that. And the opportunity for the detention is on the back. You can see, you'll see three entrances. You'll see the one off Lee, two off Summerlin as you go toward the back. This is also in the area where I believe they're already widening the road to Four Lane. I believe they've done, I think, one side of that, and I believe the other side is underway, and will take a little while to go. You know, I think the product is exactly what basically was anticipated originally with a commercial PUD portion. We're happy to answer any particular questions you have about the project. I have also here the engineer and owner as well, part of 1317 Investment LLC, Mr. Oden. And we have Mr. Josh Osterhout, who is the engineer from the Civil Design Group. We would have to say as the, you know, I hate to be the shortest lawyer in the room, we have constitutional ramifications here. Obviously, due process concerns, equal protection concerns, the takings clause against any kind of taking where there is no use that is able to be provided for, for the best and reasonable use of the property. And thus, we wanna, you wouldn't want to have to have just and reasonable compensation. We have to protect against arbitrary and capricious government action, and now I've said all the boilerplate that I'm required to say at a rezoning hearing. We appreciate the opportunity to enhance the job base, the property value base, and the aesthetics. Don't want to outwear our welcome, but we are here to answer any questions that you like, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to present in a short amount of time with you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, and thank you for that presentation. You may have already went over this, but just for my clarification and anyone else who may have gotten confused in the, how much space are we looking at here? I see there's a gas station, there's room for a small restaurant, like a fast food style restaurant, and also retail space. Are we looking to have like multiple retailers in there? How much square footage?
Well, my understanding is that the shopping center is approximately 72,000, in the back is approximately 72,000 square feet.
Okay.
The car, and I said the wrong thing. Top is car wash, and that's about 3,000 square feet. My apologies. The other section in the middle toward the, you know, toward the entrance off Lee, that is the smaller commercial retail building hoping for like a coffee shop, like a Starbucks or Chipotle or Chick-fil-A or something like that. And then the convenience store is the bottom. It's six-sided double pumps, that's 4,000 square feet. And so, those are the square footages I have. I also have the engineer who's a lot brighter on these concepts than I am, if you want to ask more specific questions.
Okay. And when traffic is exiting, is there going to be a red light there, a roundabout, something? How are we gonna get all this traffic out?
I'm gonna let Josh answer that. I think there's some concepts for that.
Appreciate that. And if you'll just give us your name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, Josh Osterhout with Civil Design Group, 36225 Detroit Road, Ebon, Ohio. To answer your question, at this point, we have not done a traffic study. So, the Lee Road, or this portion of Lee Road at least, is governed by the county. And so, at the intersection, currently, there's no plans for a light. Talking with the county, they will likely require us to do a traffic study before we get final approval from them, so that will be part of our next step once we get rezoned, if you guys grant us that.
Okay. Thank you for that. And Council, questions, thoughts on that, Madam Mayor?
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. Thank you for coming in presenting, Attorney Jordan. I, I'm glad to see that this is a PUD because we have a lot of car washes and gas stations. So, hopefully with the mixed use that it will meet, and it's, it's subjective to say this is the best use, best and highest use, but I think it would be something that would be positive in the community. But as Madam Chair has said, maybe a light or something to try to help with traffic and egress and all of that coming in and out would be great. But I know that's the county, and they are expanding Lee Road. That's a major project that's going on in the county. So, that would help, you know, to help with traffic and safety. But again, I'm glad to see the mixed use because we do, you know, and I see this retention pond on the side. Is that, WSA is already weighed in on that for your plans?
If I can actually take a step back to the traffic, and then I'll get to the pond. One thing I forgot to mention, with the traffic study, you know, it'll determine whether or not we need a light at the intersection, but also to mitigate some of the traffic off of Lee Road. The, we only have one curb cut proposed there, and it's a right-in, right-out.
Oh, okay.
So, that will help direct traffic to the intersection, one way or the other when you leave.
Because I thought it was three, did you say it was three entrances or?
Yes. The other two are on Summerlin. One is, would be the exit for the complex to take you to the intersection for customers. And the furthest one to the west over by the pond is strictly for truck traffic, for deliveries.
Okay. So, you're kinda have traffic flowing in a way that would, would make it harmonious because you have the three entrances and the one way in and way out to come to the car wash?
Correct. And you'll see too, even within the site, coming in off of Lee Road, we have a boulevard to kind of direct all the traffic to a main road that goes north and south and then splits to the various other buildings. That way, we're not backing up traffic onto Lee Road.
Okay. And the detention pond?
Yeah, so the detention pond, that just happens to be the low end of the site. There's a lot of gray change on this, on this parcel. So, it's just the natural spot. And you'll see right next to the detention pond, there's also a flood zone. So, we will avoid that flood zone, and the pond will serve the entire complex.
All that impervious surface that from the car wash will kind of flow in there as well?
Correct, yeah. And part of that, part of our final approvals will be going through the county for all of our engineering and also the city as well.
Okay. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Absolutely. Coach, questions?
When, when a project like this is being planned, and one of the things you'd like to see come to there is some type of food retail, and you mentioned a couple of examples.
Sprouts would be good.
How does that, how does that work as far as, you know, getting them and then building basically based on their specifications? I mean, how far along are y'all?
Well, I know, I know the client's been the IC, ISCS, as well as gone to different customer bases, but I'll let the, I'll let the client talk about that. That's always a market issue, but that's a desire certainly.
Yeah, I'll speak on behalf of this as well. So, they're already, even though, you know, we still have a few months of design to actually finalize this and get through our LDP and all of our other permits. The client has started having conversations with potential tenants. And, you know, all of the properties, or sorry, all the buildings abutting, Lee Road will all be individual tenants, but the larger building would likely be subdivided into multiple tenants. And the way that the architect will construct that, it'll be a divisible building. And, you know, those will have to each come in for their own license and permits and everything. Hopefully, that answers your question.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Coach. Anyone else? Quick, nope. That being said, this is a public hearing. Mr. Gray, did you have something to add to that?
Yes, sorry I left this out. On February 4th, the Planning Commission recommended approval. And if approved, staff supports an additional new condition to limits its use to car wash, gas station, quick-serve restaurant, and retail establishments.
Thank you. And then would we also add some kind of condition in there regarding traffic and how it's handled once the traffic study is done, depending on what the county says?
Oh, yes, you can.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
That being said, Francis, is a public hearing, so if we have anyone here who would like to speak on this item, now is your chance. You can come on down, give us your name and address for the record. As our great councilman, Sam Davis, would say, if there are no takers, we're going to close this public hearing, and we will take this item up on Monday. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Don't worry, friends, there's more. Look at that. Yes. And our next item is item 25-100, says to consider a petition to annex 79.60 acres on Doris Road and Land Lot 228, District 2, Section 5, parcel ID 0001. Application by Themis Asset Recovery LLC. by Themis Asset Recovery LLC in care of Jeff Matthews. And Mr. Dana Gray is going to go over this item with us also.
Okay. So the site is currently undeveloped on Doris Road. It's about seventy-nine acres. Again, the applicant's requesting to annex approximately those seventy-nine acres. It is presently zoned RA, which is residential agriculture, which is in the county, to R2, single-family residence detached, which is in the city. Douglas County has the opportunity to review this application and have no objections.
Okay. Thank you for that, Mr. Gray. And, I'm sorry, I just lost my train of thought. So, given that, counsel, did you guys have any questions of Mr. Gray while he's up here? No? Madam Mayor, did you have any questions or thoughts?
I did. So, this is a, has it gone before the commission yet?
Not the annexation, but the rezoning has.
So, the rezoning was from residential agricultural to single-family residential detached?
Correct.
Okay. What'd the planning commission say about the rezoning? I know you usually tell us.
Yeah.
I can tell you. Well, that's our next item.
I'm sorry.
So we'll get to it in a moment.
Oh, I apologize, I'm jumping.
No, no, it's okay.
I'm going too fast. I ran through the red light. I apologize.
No, you're okay.
Okay. So this is just to consider a petition to annex into the city?
Yes, ma'am.
And we will be annexing, so we'll talk about the zoning after.
And the next item, the very next item.
Okay. I apologize. Thank you.
I do believe so, yes. Mr. Gray, so.
I have it though.
You've, I know that we've had communications with the county, and I believe, does the school system weigh in on the annexations as well, or just the county?
The county can weigh in on the annexation.
Okay. And what did they say?
They, we have not reached out to them, what, Douglas County?
Yes.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
No, you're okay.
They reviewed it, and they have no objections.
Okay. And then if we were to annex this in, is there any reason that our city would not be able to provide services, our great, you know, trash, road, street services, all of that, to additional city residents?
No.
No? Okay. Okay. Counsel, on the annexation before we move along? Okay. With that being said, I think, I feel like if you have more questions, let's consider that and bring that back up on Monday. Is that okay? Mr. Dotson, did you have something to weigh in on this?
Did the county initially file objection to this annexation?
No.
They didn't?
Okay. But the next item is, works along with this one, and that is item twenty-five dash zero five five. Says to hold a public hearing and consider a request for a change in zoning from residential agricultural county to, or to, single-family residential detached city for seventy-nine point six zero acres located on Doris Road and Landlot two twenty-eight, District Two, Section Five, parcel ID zero 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 one, application by Jeff Matthews. Mr. Dana Gray is here to help guide us through this item as well. Yes, Madam Mayor, this is the other portion of that last item.
Okay.
All right. So, yes, again, this is rezoning from RA, which is county, to R2, which is city. They are proposing forty-one single-family homes. The applicant, as you know, is also applying for the annexation. If the rezoning is approved, the applicant is required to adhere to a density of one unit per acre under a condition of approval. And planning commission recommended denial on February fourth.
And then, question, as it is currently zoned with a residential agricultural, what all could be done with that?
They can as well build single-family homes. Their density might be just a little bit larger.
Okay.
So it's sort of similar.
Okay. So if they were to stay in the county, they could go out right now, just pull permits and build more homes than what they're proposing to build now?
Correct.
Okay. Did you have a question after? No, no, go ahead.
Excuse me, it's been a long day, so I want to make sure I'm understating this correctly. So, as Councilwoman Miller stated, under the current zoning, they could technically develop more single-family units as of right now in the county ordinance.
Yes.
But they still want to become city?
Yes.
Because?
They stated at the planning commission that they prefer to work with the city because things move a little faster for them. But they are here, and they can give you more details on their reason to annex.
I would be interested in hearing their perspective of why it's important to get in the city when they have the ability to do what they need to do in the county.
Counsel, did you have any questions of Mr. Gray then, before we call the applicant up here?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I was gonna ask, Mr. Gray, thank you for presenting to us, and the, the planning commission denied. And what I wanted to ask it about is the surrounding air, homes or the area, how does it, does it fit in with what is proposed? But they're saying R2, but they already said that it would be one per acre and not two per acre.
Two per acre.
Yes, sir. And is it continuous with whatever's that's there currently?
It's, it's a little bit more denser than the surrounding area. They do have kind of more farmland and more acreage. The community did come out at the planning commission and kind of explained who has what there. So they do have some farming out there as well, so.
Okay. All right, that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Would the applicant like to come down? If you'll give us your name and address for the record, and then we'll batter you with all of our questions.
So thanks for having us for this request. My name's Brian Howell with HRC Engineers. I'm representing Themis Asset Group. And as Dana explained, we are proposing to request, or we're requesting to rezon this property from RA, which is the Douglas County zoning, to R2. We are proposing one-acre lots, one-acre minimum. Our density is currently lower than what the Douglas County density is, as well as the R2 density, which is two units per acre. We're surrounded by RA property from the Douglas County and R2 property, which is the city property that we're contiguous with for about five hundred feet or so on the other side of Doris Road, be the southeast side of Doris Road. So, as far as why we want to come into the city, the client, and the clients had a couple of different projects in the city, and it's really works well with the city staff, as far as their responsiveness, willingness to work with us. Just, you know, it's really gone well in the past, and that's the reason for wanting to rezon into the city. But as Dana said, we've got forty-one lots. You know, we've got two separate entrances, one on either side of Mobley. You know, this development will follow all regulations, all the city of Douglasville regulations, both of our entrances will comply with all Douglas County DOT regulations as well. So do you have any other questions?
Coach?
Looking at the aerial photo of the site, looks wooded. Is it hardwood trees? I mean, was it?
Yes, it's currently wooded and otherwise undeveloped.
What, what would you say the topography's, I mean, is it hilly?
It's moderately sloped. It's pretty, it's pretty sloped. There's some topography, I wouldn't say significant, but yeah, it's, I mean, it's fairly sloped and wooded.
So clearing out for soybeans or something like that's probably not in its future?
Yes, that's probably not gonna work on that, that topography.
Okay. That's all I had right now.
Thank you, Coach. Madam Mayor?
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Howell, for presenting to us, and we appreciate the compliment that we work well in the community, with developers. But, now, I had to taste statistics twice in college, but I did do algebra and all of that.
I got you.
So, it's eighty acres and it's forty-one lots. That's two. That's two per acre. And you said it was gonna be one per acre.
Point five per acre. Or close to point five per acre.
I'm confused. If it's forty-one units and it's eighty?
Well, that would be basically, or your lots are gonna be two acre lots?
They're gonna be one-acre lots.
What are you gonna do with the other forty acres?
With the other forty-eight acres? So if you, can you pull up the concept plan if y'all don't mind?
Is it gonna be for future development?
No, it's the whole, the whole property is actually lots, but it's one-acre lots. If you were able to look at the concept plan.
Do you see more houses in the future for this? Because right now, you're only using about half of them.
No.
No, we're using the whole property. It's, it's, so.
Green space, streets. Mm-hmm.
It's almost eighty acres.
Some of the, so it's, might be confusing because some of these lots are not forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty feet, square feet. You know, some of them are actually bigger. So that's, it's just, we just set a one-acre minimum lot size. So some of the lots are actually bigger. We're using the whole property.
Okay.
Essentially.
It'll be consumed with green space.
Yes, we.
That includes, the forty-one lots includes the whole acres.
Correct.
Okay.
And, you know, we've got a decent amount of green space actually due to floodplain and creek buffers and everything, so that's taken away some of that acreage as well.
Okay. And then, are you on sewer or septic?
Septic.
And would you be connecting to sewer? Or how would that work?
Um.
Because typically, most of the city, I don't know a lot of the city that's on septic, it's just on sewer.
If, you know, if we had the opportunity in the future, I'm sure.
To be sewer?
Yes.
To connect to sewer? And you're near North Douglas Elementary School?
Correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Can you tell us a little bit about the homes that you're looking?
So, the product is gonna be anywhere from the four hundred and fifty thousand range and up. Okay, thank you. And this is basically, you know, we're obviously not far enough in the planning process for this to be a done deal by any means. This is just an example of the house.
Okay.
We would, you know, our, all architectural components facade would meet the city of Douglasville requirements, but we're in the price range of, you know, four hundred and fifty and up.
Okay. And then, as far as, it looks like, I see mostly ranches, maybe one or one that might have a second story on it. It looks like you've got two and three different types of materials. Are they all gonna be at least two-car garages?
Um, I believe, I believe they would be. But again, we haven't, you know, gotten too far down that road yet, but I believe so.
Okay. Just a zoning request.
Well, the pictures are here, I just wanted to, I just wanted to. Okay, yes, ma'am.
So, I don't mean to put the cart before the horse, as they say, but are you looking to just sell these properties? Are you looking to manage and rent a percentage of these properties? Or like, what would be your intention for this development?
I believe they would all be sold is the intention, and not rental properties. That, that's.
Thank you.
So then, would there be an HOA or any kind of covenants to ensure that there's not?
Yes, I believe we would have, be required to have an HOA.
Okay. And would there be any amenities?
Yes. Right now, we're showing amenities. The, the code, I guess, didn't specifically say based on this number of lots, so we would be, we'd be open, you know, obviously, we would meet the city of Douglasville's code on what would be required for this development.
And then also, it says that there's an existing cemetery on the property to be protected. How would it be protected?
So, we would have a undisturbed buffer around it, basically.
Okay. Counsel, do y'all have more questions before we open this floor up? Okay. With that being said, this is a, a public hearing, so at this time, I'd like to yield the floor to anyone who may be here that would like to speak on this item. If you'll come down and give us your name and address for the record. I think we've got, okay, and if you've already filled out a card, that's great. If not, there's some cards right over here with Ms. Callan and Ms. James, Ms. Welch. If you'll come give us your name and address for the record. I think you've got a whole, is it three minutes? Okay? Yes, ma'am?
My name is Cindy Welch. I live at three zero zero two Concord Way. I have a couple questions. I know they, they want to annex to the city, but they want R2, which, which, if you're in the city, you, and you're on sewer, you probably could get by with fifteen to eighteen thousand square foot lots. So unless you put a condition that they can have no more than forty-one lots, when they get ready to do their site plan, if that's not a condition, they can get as many lots there as they want. And when I looked at the site plan of the, of the whole subdivision, nowhere did it show anything to do with amenities. So if you want them to do amenities, again, you're gonna have to put that as a condition.
That would be a condition in there, yes, ma'am, it would.
Yes. I mean, they're telling you all this, but their site plan doesn't show that.
Ms. Cindy, I promise we'll take care of that if that's what it comes to.
Well, I mean, it's not fair to the people that live there that think that they're only gonna have forty-one lots when there's eighty-two acres. So, I'm, you know, just make you aware.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
If you'll just give us your name and address for the record.
Counsel members, my name's Dewitt Roper, sixty-eight twenty-six Cedar Mountain Road. Excuse me. Ask that you vote against the applicant and his annexation and rezoning for the following reasons. Number one is what the zoning board said. He has the same R2 that he's asking for. The planning and zoning board voted against this unanimously. Also, he has addressed the traffic control such as left or right turn lanes, acceleration or deceleration lanes, caution lights, sidewalks going to the school, speed limits in the quarter-mile of city limits that would be in the city limits. What jurisdiction would enforce speed limits? What jurisdiction would you call when a crime is committed, the city or the county? The area for the entrance to the property is quite dangerous. Several years ago, a lady and a baby hit a telephone pole, it caught fire, and they both died. A few months later, there's another two-car accident hit the, and this is right in front of the property, the next telephone pole, somebody hit it, and two people, the car caught fire, and they died. At the bottom of the hill, two ladies that worked at Walmart were killed a few years ago. The applicant said at the zoning meeting that the county would take care of these issues. I can assure you they won't. This area is rural with cattle farms and very large farms and alpaca farm and hay farms. Having this annex into the city would take away the character of this rural area. In twenty-ten, the county approved the rezoning and permits at the intersection of Cedar Mountain and Doris Road. In order to keep the rural character of the area, they added stipulations that the gas canopy had to have a pitch roof, that they couldn't light up the gas logo, it had to be lit from the ground up with halo lighting and extensive landscaping, along with two-hundred foot of right turn lanes on the Cedar Mountain, on the Doris, two-hundred foot of Doris on the Cedar Mountain, a hundred foot of Cedar Mountain on to the establishment. This was in twenty-ten. The traffic then was fourteen thousand cars a day. And I had to do that traffic study. That was fifteen years ago. There was also the issue with the graveyard. He said he'd do something historical about the graveyard, but there is no history of the graveyard. I told the county about this graveyard about sixty years ago. There's no markers there, just stones and depressed areas. Then the annexation, when both had R2 zoning, and all these need to be addressed before you go forward. Also, will the city do the road improvements needed and the resurfacing when needed? I'd ask you to address all these issues. The zoning board asked the applicant why he wanted the annexation when both had R2 zoning, and he said the city was easier to work with. I think he thinks it'd be less, less stipulations, like the county put on the Doris Road and Cedar Mountain when I applied for my permit. And they approved it, he just couldn't get the financing back in twenty-ten because the banks failed. And they approved it, he just couldn't get the financing back in twenty-ten because the banks fell. He also said it would cost him less to go through the city. To, to us and our neighborhood, this is like putting a chicken house at the mall. It's just not a good fit. For these and other reasons, I respectfully ask that you deny this application and keep our rural area rural. I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi.
Good evening.
My name's Laura Marshall. I live at thirteen twenty Doris Road. I am literally right next door. Um, my concern is the traffic as well. There's lots of accidents. We've had people go through our fence a lot of times. Um, actually took out the telephone pole as well. Miracle he lived, but he did. Um, and my other concern is, I have livestock, so, and I have alpacas. And they have no defenses but to have a livestock guardian dog. Um, my dogs patrol all night long and bark all night long. Sleep during the day, bark all night long. Anything that moves out there, they're barking. Um, so my concern is, custo, I mean customers. The neighbors calling and complaining all the time because my dogs are barking. That is, you know, a real concern to me.
That's fair.
And I'm not sure about the schools. I should've went to the school and asked, you know, I know in other meetings, they've talked about teacher to student ratios and that the schools are flooded. So, those are my, my only concerns right now. Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Cindy Alton at one four seven five North Flat Rock Road, Douglasville, Georgia. Um, my concern is, I guess it's Gothards Creek, is where our, one of our main sources of water, which is directly across the street, I believe, from where they're proposing. My concern is the environmental impact to that water, especially if it's a HOA, you gotta keep your lawns up and they got all those chemicals on the grass. Where's that, how are you gonna handle all that? Um, that's important to me. It's bad enough with all the chemicals out there as it is. So it's something that I would suggest definitely, um, some kind of environmental impact assessment before they even think about all this. That's it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item?
Mayor and City Council.
Good evening.
My name is Larry H. Kelly. I live at fourteen ninety-six Doris Road. Second driveway from the elementary school up there. I would've been on time tonight, but traffic was rough getting out of my driveway. Then I drive south up to Cedar Mountain Road, turn left, go up Cedar Mountain to Chicago. I don't cuss that much, but sometimes I feel like it. In the morning, from seven o'clock to eight-thirty, traffic is stopped in front of my house. And if, uh, Paulding County would go around, that's where all the traffic come from, to get to I-twenty, they come down Doris Road and they go up South Flat Rock or Chicago to, uh, get on I-twenty. And there, since we've lived there since nineteen eighty-six, there would probably have been ten or fifteen real bad fatalities on that road. The road is narrow. Adding more traffic down there would be just, it'd be bad. So I'm asking y'all to take into consideration for the people that live there. I have six acres. I used to have chickens and all this good stuff, good farm land. And all my neighbors around there have got some acreage and they have, uh, donkeys, you hear them every morning, you hear chickens every morning. So, if they put that many houses over there, they're gonna complain about the wildlife. Because of donkeys and, uh, cows mooing and stuff like that. Some people not used to being in the country. And I would like to keep Doris Road country, up to Sweetwater Church Road anyway. Thank you very much for your time.
Mr. Kelton, we need some of them eggs. You got those chickens over there. I said, we need some of those eggs. You got those chickens over there.
You're popular. I'm just kidding. Just kidding.
Was there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? I know. I know, I was gonna give you guys just another moment. If there was anyone else who would like to speak on this item? If not, then I'm going to close this public hearing. Um, I know it's not typically something that we don't banner back and forth. Um, I, I did just want to clarify, um, Ms. Welch, that, um, if this is rezoned, then there would be a condition for no more than one, um, one home per acre. So that would be in the conditions.
And they did say something about the cemetery as well, that they would protect the cemetery.
Correct, yeah. So, I'm just, just, oh, I keep hitting that tonight, so just to clarify. But, um, council, did you guys have any more questions before we move along to the next item? I know that, okay, well, with that being said, um, did you have something else?
If it is granted, uh, could there be a condition that there's some kind of, um, sound barrier between my property and the residential?
So, typically, it would not be like those sound barrier walls, but there would be a buffer and, um, for the uses, I would have to check, I'm looking back there, and, um.
Mr. Gray.
Oh, there's Mr. Gray. Mr. Gray, can you confirm with me? And, and if you don't know off top of your head, if you could maybe just find out for us by Monday, what, um, what the required buffer would be? And then that way we could discuss if that would be adequate or if we would need more of a buffer.
Um, yes, I can provide that on Monday. Um, we do have buffers that can be walls, um, trees, bushes. Um, it may not reduce the decibels that the, um, animals create, but it, it would definitely create a visual buffer. Um, and it might lessen or deaden the sound a little bit.
Yeah, cause I also have donkeys, so, and they're pretty loud too, so. Thank you.
Thank you guys very much. All right, um, with that being said, guys, we're going to move along to the, to the next item and I actually just closed. I'm sorry. Give me just a moment here. I just, um, accidentally closed out my, my agenda. Even my iPad is saying that's enough.
iPad is tired.
Mm-hmm, okay. Okay.
Gee.
Thank you guys, thank you all. Um, okay, next item is item twenty-five dash one zero five. It says to adopt a resolution to vacate and abandon a portion of the Wedge Alley right-of-way adjacent to the town green space. And Ms. Miranda Jordan is going to go over this item with us.
Good evening once again. Ms. Woodward has been working on title clearance with the developer for a property located behind the Town Green Amphitheater. And upon a title examination of the property, there was a discovery of an unopened alleyway that actually cuts right through the amphitheater property right behind it. There's, as long as anyone can remember, uh, you know, there was a jail there before that. Uh, before that, I don't know what it looked like, but that is, it was, it was an unopened alleyway and that is hindering the ability to convey clear title to the developer. Previous, um, title examinations did not come up with this and it was a very obscure thing that I'm not even sure how they found. So, this resolution to abandon will clear that up so that, uh, the title will be clear and then the, um, plans for development purchase can move forward.
Okay.
Thank you for that explanation. Council, questions?
Cut and dry.
No, I completely agree. Because this is not, um, a public hearing. Are, are you guys good with placing this on the consent agenda?
Looks good.
Thank you, okay. You guys, this is our last item with me.
Yay!
Item twenty-five dash one zero seven says to consider a request for the city to grant a sewer easement to Miller Architecture and Planning across city property, uh, commonly known as six-seven-four-zero West Spring Street in Douglasville, Georgia. And Ms. Miranda Jordan is going to go over this item with us.
And, um, as you will see, um, Councilman Estes has stepped out due to a potential conflict that is outlined in the memorandum attached to your agenda item. Uh, he potentially will have a ownership interest in a future development on that property. The mayor pro tem, Mr. Miller, is not here tonight, but he also wanted to make sure that it was fully disclosed, that he is the Miller of Miller Architecture and Planning, Inc. So he came to, uh, the city with a, he comes to the city with a request for a sewer easement to run along the boundary line of sixty-seven forty West Spring Street, which is city property. It is the boundary between the recently acquired airway property and the previously acquired, uh, parks maintenance area behind. Based on some other property, um, sales that we have done in the past year, and this not being a sale, but as a similar way to compare prices for what was paid for that, based on the square footage and acreage of the space that would, um, where the easement would occupy. The, um, city has offered to, uh, the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars to be paid by Miller Architecture and Planning, Inc. upon the approval of council. So that is what you are being asked to prove today, that price and the placement of the easement.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Coach, you had a question?
So, we, um, Ms. Jordan, we've, we've granted these types of requests before for easement requests for.
Yes.
For other entities or businesses or people?
That's right. So typically, we are getting a lot of requests you'll see come across for easements through Jesse Davis Park. There have been a number of those in the past year and a half just due to construction. And because those serve us as the city, we do not charge money, um, to those utilities that come through. There was another request that was about two years ago that was actually mentioned earlier in the WSA presentation of the Silverman Group having an easement across the golf course.
Right.
Uh, they did pay the city for that because not only just for the rights to have a sewer line that was going to serve them under the golf course, but also due to any damage that that caused as well. This, uh, we do not anticipate it causing any damage to the surface area because currently there's a gravel driveway that is exactly where the sewer line will be placed.
Thank you. Um, and, I mean, for reference, uh, what, if anything, are we currently using this piece of land for?
Because it's a, a boundary between two properties, there's the requirement for buffers and that sort of thing that would not allow construction on top of that. So it, it's not really changing the, the way it looks on the, on the earth side, or on the, on the land side.
Right, and as you've already stated, it is, um, at this time, a gravel drive, so it's not like concrete or anything like that that's going to be damaged or a parking lot or a current building even.
Correct. The, the gravel driveway leads back to the, uh, tower that is back there. But it doesn't, it's not gonna run in any kind of interfering area to the tower.
Okay.
It would just, it would go around it.
Thank you.
Um, council, questions? Mr. Davis, do you have a question?
Yes, uh, Ms. Miranda was saying that we have did it in the past for, uh, but there were not elected officials, so would that be, uh, conflict? Or are we gonna eat up about that, or what's, what's happening to the price wise, or how about that?
So I'll, I'll actually give you the, the comparison amounts and it's, it's not quite apples to apples because recently, while I was out over the last few months, you all approved a purchase of abandoned right-of-way at Elsie Street. And the price for that was, uh, twenty-two forty, which is close to this. It was actually a little bit smaller area. It was point zero seven acres, but it was an actual fee simple transfer of title of land that was, we didn't know we had. And it was again, one of those things where a development was taking place. And on the title exam, they found this little triangle of land that was point oh seven acres that they could not attribute to anybody else other than abandoned ri, uh, unused and abandoned right-of-way. So that was twenty-two forty. There was another one, um, that was done a little over a year ago on Durley Lane, where the, there was a little strip of right-of-way on the side of Durley that belonged to the city. And the developer asked us if we would be willing to dispose of that and it was again, something that we didn't know that we had because it was off of the roadway a good bit. That was about sixty-five hundred dollars, but it was over twice what the square footage and acreage is for this particular asking. Again, it was a transfer of full title. An easement only allows you to use, occupy, dig into, put a, put a hole on or something like that, but it doesn't actually transfer any title.
Yeah.
Thank you for that. Did that clarify for everyone?
I mean, uh, basically, anybody out there that was in this situation that needed an easement, we would grant it like we're doing now, or, or proposing to do now.
If we could.
If we, if we.
If, if, if legally and it was a feasible thing to do, then that is what the council has done in the past, irrespective of the asking party. In this case, there, uh, and, and that's why those two individuals are not in the room at this time. In this case, it does happen to be people that are on the city council. The other, the benefit, um, another benefit to us in general, and, and Mr. Dodson and I discussed this, is anytime we can get somebody on our public sewer system, it's a good thing.
Right.
So, it, it's, it's, it's better for the environment than having septic, which is currently what's in there and what's going to be removed if this easement is able to occur. And something I did not mention is there's no other, um, way, according to the WSA, for Miller Architecture and Planning, Inc. to tap into the sewer except for going through with an easement. It's not just convenience, it's not just, this is gonna be the cheapest and easiest route. It's just not feasible, um, according to the WSA.
It's necessary.
Thank you very much for that explanation. Does that help everybody? Okay, um, because I, I don't, I don't feel like it'd be right to put that on the consent, being as what it is, but I just wanted to make sure everyone's okay with that, okay? If y'all think of any more questions, um, I'm sure that you guys know who to reach out to between now and Monday, but, um.
Madam Mayor.
What? That is all that we have this evening for, um, planning and development.
That's good. We're a busy city, taking care of business, so. Thank you so much. You've done an excellent job with a long agenda. We'll move on then to other business. Is there any other business to come before council tonight from the elected officials? I don't see any, thank you. We'll do updates on our city staff. Our city attorney, Mr. Joel Dodson.
No business, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Our staff attorney, Ms. Miranda Jordan.
No business, Madam Mayor.
You've been busy tonight, thank you. Um, our police department, Deputy Chief J.R. Davison.
No business, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Um, our city manager's department, Assistant City Manager, Ms. Karen Callen.
No business, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. You've done an excellent job, Ms. Callen.
Thank you.
Voyage here, thank you. Um, comments from citizens and delegates, if you sustain the meeting, you'd like to speak to us, please come forward, give us your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes to talk to us about any business germane to the City of Douglasville. Thank you. We don't see anyone. Not having any other business, then this meeting is adjourned.